We will call the meeting to order.
Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide information during the meeting to the council. These are informational presentations only, and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda, and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone; otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching, and thank you for engaging with the city of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
Seth Balon. Sean Lucas.
Here.
Jared Giddens.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can stop right here, right? We just don't want, we won't go any farther? So, take a couple minutes here and talk, I guess. You get to listen to me one last time from up here. So, I want to thank you all for attending and celebrating our city and our community tonight. We began tonight with celebrating someone who has given so much of their life to help all of us, and will end with a swearing-in of some new city leadership tonight. When I joined this council 13 years ago, Mr. Peterson here, it was during a time of some turmoil and scandal. But as a group, we decided that we're going to leave that. The decisions made by that council were going to be for that council, and they were going to be in the past. Nixa's always looked to the future, and I know that this council will continue that legacy moving forward. So, as I thought about what I was going to talk about tonight, I was looking through all my old notes. I have reams and re, or not reams, because I don't have any paper, but I have pages and pages and pages of notes, agendas, meetings, spreadsheets, as Jared said. But I found one that it said "platform points." And so, I went back and read it, and I figured out it was actually the original text for the original campaign website that I created out of some horrible thing 13 years ago. And so, I thought I would, you know, take a look at that and think about, from that, what were the things that I was able to accomplish? What were some of the things I wanted to, that I wasn't able to? And just take a look at that. So, the first point on that was jobs and economic development for Nixa. And all of us up here, and many of you in the room, know the constant battle that we continue to fight for that. And we haven't seen any flashy national chains coming in, but what we have seen is over 100% increase in our retail sales tax over these last nine years. That means the businesses that are here are continuing to grow, continuing to thrive, and the new businesses that have come in are able to be successful. We have several business owners in the room tonight, and they can attest to that. We've increased our support for our partners, who are tasked to support our businesses. This includes our renewed support for the Chamber of Commerce, which we are very proud to do, and our partnership with Ozark and Christian County to create and grow Show Me Christian County, our economic development group here in the county. We've also supported our downtown revitalization, got several members of them here as well, and we are now really seeing the fruits of that work coming forward. So, these partners, along with the work of our assistant city administrator Cindy Robbins, to create a business concierge environment, to really create an attractive place where different types of businesses and developments will want to come. So, I know we have issues, and we can only solve those by working together, and so I hope this council will continue to do that moving forward. The second thing on my 13-year-old website was a better quality of life for everyone. I thought, what did I mean by that? And so, to me, really, that's always meant three things. So, it's meant police, parks, and infrastructure. And under Chief Campbell's leadership, we've been rated the safest major city in southwest Missouri for at least the last five, long time, last five years. So, we're able to double the pay scale for our entry-level officers over that time, and we're able to provide top-quality training and equipment to our officers, which I know that they appreciate as well. We've also seen great improvements in our parks and our parks programs led by our director, Matt Kraus, including the addition of the Gardens at Woodfield across the street over here, the Nixa Dog Park, which we might want to promote that a little more. We're not seeing a lot of people at Dog Park, and our recent addition of our award-winning all-inclusive playground. And I, along with, I'm sure many of you wish we could have done more. We always need another, we need another community park, we need other neighborhood parks, and with the donation of the Ove property south of town, or north of town, I really hope we can continue to expand those park facilities moving forward. And to Doug Colvin and his award-winning utilities and public works teams, they've been able to maintain and strengthen our community's infrastructure, including significant road projects that we drive through constantly in town, a one-of-a-kind new stormwater project that we hadn't seen in the past, our premier and award-winning water and wastewater treatment systems, the development of the Nixa solar farm, and the thing that, one of the things that I'm most proud of is council being able to actually reduce our electric rates in the city last year, which supports not only residents but also businesses as So, my third point on my website was connecting us with parks and sidewalks. So, that was probably more of an aspirational dream. That was before I knew anything, and I had hoped to be able to connect every school, every neighborhood, every park, and every business in the city with sidewalks, bike paths, trails, whatever. But due to budget constraints, we haven't been able to do that. What we have been able to do is to build, thank for these stats too, Scott, 13 miles of new sidewalks in the 47 new subdivisions that have been built in the last 10 years, almost six miles of repaired and replaced and additional of those connecting sidewalks, the sidewalks that connect neighborhoods together, the addition of handicapped accessible ramps throughout the system, the construction of 1.3 miles of new sidewalks, including multiple signalized pedestrian crossings in partnership with MoDOT, and almost three and a half miles of new sidewalks and trails that are currently either in design or under construction. So, that's a lot. So, today, I can safely walk Mr. Giddens' house up in Wicklow, past Ms. Graham's house on Greg Road, down to the high school, five and a half miles on a connected system of sidewalks and crosswalks. And so, I think that's a very important thing that we were able to do. But there's more to do. And my last point, so not to keep you here all night, but was to keep our government accountable. Like I said, we'd come out of an embezzlement scandal when I first got on the council, and we were having a hard time balancing our city budget. Over the years, this kind of accountability has taken many shapes in my mind, some of them you can see tonight, these cameras that are all around us here, and the people watching this meeting online, being able to open that up to everyone, the creation of and the additions to our communications department led by Drew Douglas, including our new website, monthly newsletters, social media outreach, and continued dedication to our comprehensive strategic planning model. Financial transparency and budgeting has always been very important to me, led by Jennifer Evans and her team over from the finance department. We've had 100% positive audits in all nine years of me being mayor. We've had a series of state and national financial reporting and transparency awards. We've defined a set of specific financial metrics that we use for planning and budgeting, which I think is very important to what we've been able to do. And another one of the things that I'm most proud of is over these nine years, we've been able to reduce the city's debt by almost 90%. And finally, the thing that I am probably most proud of, and thank you, Becca, I see my signs up, I like that, is a grassroots dedication to innovation. One of the things I wanted to see, I thought, like most people think when you come in from the outside into government, is you can run it like a business. I can make it more efficient, make it leaner, make it meaner, get it out there. You can't. You don't have control over pricing, you don't have control over marketing, you don't have control over who comes and who doesn't come, and you have certain things you must provide, like public safety, infrastructure, and you do the best you can with the finances you have. But what we've been able to do with, you can see our wall of innovation, which I think is a new addition here, is that Nixa has been recognized again and again as the most innovative community in Missouri. Not southwest Missouri, not southern Missouri, all of Missouri. We've received four, or five, I thought there's five of those, yeah. We've received five innovation awards over the last six years, and we're up for another one this year. And that really shows, and that's not things that are coming from council or things that are coming necessarily from leadership, those are things that are coming from line workers at the city to make a difference in their jobs and make a difference in our community. And this allows us to continue to do more with less. We always say that we do such a good job, that's why we've had so many failed tax increases over the last several years. We're very happy and appreciative of the community for passing our recent public safety tax, and that will allow us to continue to do those things. But we'll also to note that we continue to have one of the lowest municipal tax rates in the region. And so, even with the increase, we will still be lower than almost every community in our region. And so, that again is something that I'm very proud of. So, taking a look back at all of that, and a lot of people ask me, says, "What is the greatest accomplishment you've had as mayor?" So, like I said, I didn't get any large, we didn't get any large flashy businesses like Amazon while I was the mayor. We didn't have any groundbreaking infrastructure, they're not building a new airport, there's not an interstate going to come through the middle of town anytime soon, there's not even really a lot of shiny new community buildings to have a little plaque on. But what I have worked on is building an incredible team, a team that's led by our administrator Jimmy Lyles, and both the senior leadership that's up here tonight, and the supervisors, and every line worker in Nixa are dedicated to our city and to our residents. And this also goes to the leaders that are sitting up here with me tonight. I'm honored to have worked with each and every one of you, and I'm honored to call each and every one of you my friend. So, I hope my time as mayor, I hope that in my time as mayor, I have brought the best of my skills and abilities, leadership based on, like Jared likes to say, "spreadsheets," facts and numbers, processes and procedures, and a level of professionalism that is an expectation. And to meet the needs, I hope I brought all of that to meet the needs that Nixa had at the time when I was first elected. And I know that as mayor, Mr. Giddens, will do the same. We like to joke and say, "He's a man with a certain set of skills." Those of you who know Jared know his certain set of skills. And I know these skills are not my strong suit. And I hope he will bring that new style of leadership that will help our community to continue to grow and thrive into the future. So, as I step away, I'm going to charge this council and staff to remember, it's not always the loudest voice, as we have learned over the years, that is correct. And it's your job as leaders, all of you as well, to listen and to defend those not in this room, those who have not had the loudest voices. And finally, I want to thank the countless individuals, many of who are in the audience tonight, who have offered their support, their guidance, their insults and threats, and friendship along the way. And to each and every one of you, I offer my deepest gratitude. In closing, it has been the greatest honor of my life to serve as the mayor for the city of Nixa. I've had the opportunity to live in Nixa, and it's such an extraordinary place, and I've truly been blessed to call this community my home for the last 45 years. And together, we've built a city that we can all be proud to call home, and I am confident that with our shared values, we will continue to guide us in the years to come. Thank you. Oh, good. I'll have to do that for a very long time now, I hope. All right. We will move on to the first item of the agenda. If you would read the resolution, Becca.
Resolution number 2023-18, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa declaring the results of the April 4th, 2023 general municipal election.
This is required by charter that council approves the results of the election. The results of the election were provided to you in the council packet. Staff does recommend approval as it is required.
Any questions? Do we have to have a public hearing on this? Look, we do, it's a resolution. We will open up the public hearing if anyone would like to speak to this item. And we will close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussion? Motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Hi, Jared.
Okay. So, one thing that we wanted to change, add, kind of add in a new thing, is giving, I'd like to give Brian Steele a gavel that shows his years of service, so he has something to look at while he is drinking his bourbon out of his noose.
Thank you very much.
And then, we're doing this going forward, so it will continue down the line, and each new mayor will get their own gavel to wake people up during the council meetings or whatever we need to do.
All right. Very nice. All right.
Hi, State Leader.
I am Jared Giddens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Nixa.
And the ordinances of the city of Nixa.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of mayor.
In the office of mayor.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
On the 4th day of April.
On the 4th day of April.
2023.
I didn't get a box. Take my eagle, too.
You want the sanitizer as well?
No.
I think that's probably one.
Hi, State Leader.
I am solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Nixa.
The ordinances of the city of Nisa.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the council.
In the office.
In the office.
As council member District 1.
As council member District 1.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
On the 4th day of April.
On the 4th day of April.
2023.
Hi, State Leader.
Hi, State Leader.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Nisa.
The ordinances of the city of Nisa.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
Faithfully demean myself.
In the office.
In the office.
As council member District 1.
As council member District 1.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
On the 4th day of April.
On the 4th day of April.
2023.
Still here, Darlene.
It's a whole different view. Hey, I get to see you.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Nisa.
And the ordinances of the city of Nisa.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office.
In the office.
As council member District 3.
As council member District 3.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
On the 4th day of April.
On the 4th day of April.
2023. Hi, State Leader. Ashland Moore. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
The Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Nisa.
And the ordinances of the city of Nisa.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office.
In the office.
As council member District 3.
As council member District 3.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
On the 4th day of April.
On the 4th day of April.
2023.
I have one thing that I would like to read before we get started, and then I'll also, after our awards, we'll have a brief recess. So, for anyone who is done with the pictures and would like to step out, we can do that. It has been an honor and an amazing experience serving the city of Nixa for the past six years. I have met so many people along the way, and I have learned so much from our community, city staff, city council, and Mayor Steele. I am truly blessed and humbled to serve the citizens of Nixa and all our staff as your mayor. I look forward to developing new partnerships in our city and working with everyone to keep our city moving in the right direction. I do want to take a moment to thank everyone that has been involved in our city by serving in some capacity, or even just sending an email or calling in to provide input on an upcoming decision or something that they felt needed to be addressed. Planning and zoning commissioners, strategic planning committee, Home Rule Charter Review Commission, Citizens Police Academy and alumni, Parks and Recreation Volunteers, Nixa Public Schools, Christian County Library, the Christian County elected officials, the downtown revitalization, business owners, the Nixa Chamber of Commerce, staff, volunteers, and members, the American Legion, every employee of the city of Nixa, city council members, all citizens of Nixa, Mayor Brian Steele, and many other organizations have taught me so much over the past few years, which has helped me to serve our city to the best of my ability and be prepared to continue to serve in the future. In 2021, I was honored to be chosen to serve as the mayor pro tem for Mayor Brian Steele, and that is when I was able to fully understand what it takes to be a successful leader of our city. He helped me understand the history of Nixa so I had a better understanding of the present. He kept an open line of communication with me and let me help on some of the bigger things going on in our city. He has introduced me to many people that have and will continue to help Nixa be a strong community. I valued his input, and I believe he valued mine as well, and I could always tell that he has and always will want to see Nixa thrive. I also valued his sense of humor and the fact that he never missed an opportunity to joke with me or make fun of me. It was usually at a time when we needed something to lighten the mood, though, and for the record, I did a pretty decent job of dishing it back. The words "thank you" will never truly show my gratitude for Mayor Brian Steele and the sacrifices that he made and his dedication to our amazing city. I also want to thank the entire Steele family. His wife, daughters, and parents had to share him with over 20,000 other people since 2014. Most people do not realize, when you put yourself out there to serve your community, your entire family does as well. Even though "thank you" doesn't do it justice, thank you, Mayor Steele, for your leadership and friendship. The state of our city is strong. Our municipal government continues to receive awards and recognition for financial transparency, innovation, public safety, and much more. Thanks to the expert management of day-to-day operations by city staff, council doesn't have to worry about fine-tuning the details within our city departments. This allows us to focus on the bigger picture of setting priorities, ensuring that we budget adequately to address those priorities, and then tackle the new challenges that pop up along the way. We, as elected officials, have an opportunity to provide leadership by setting policy directions so staff has a clear understanding of how we want them to address certain challenges. We also need to trust their expertise as they figure out the details of how to achieve the goals we set for them. I believe council needs to focus our energy on establishing policies that ensure sustainable growth, enable business retention and expansion, and foster economic growth throughout or through incentive programs for new businesses. We also need to invest in infrastructure upgrades, public safety, and the walkability of our community. Which is kind of weird, Brian and I did not plan these two. They kind of really go well together. We are very pleased that the community chose to support our police department by providing a dedicated funding source, which will allow them to better keep up with our community growth. We will continue to pay close attention to our budget, and we will continue to stretch every single dollar as far as we can. We recognize that there are many wants and needs in the community that have not been met, mostly due to financial constraints. We will continue to enhance our efforts to bring new business to Nixa, which will in turn bring in more sales tax revenue that we can invest back into our city. It will be later in the year before It will be later in the year before we start to see the additional three-quarter cent sales tax revenue for the police. However, I plan to direct staff today to bring back a budget amendment to add two additional police officers as soon as possible. Our officers invest so much of their time in our city, and we must invest in them so they can enjoy a much more positive work-life balance. I believe we have our work cut out for us over the next few years. I also believe that your city leaders are up for the task and are 100% invested in serving every Nixa citizen to the best of our ability. I believe we are on the right track and are all willing to put in necessary time and effort. I believe the city staff and council will do everything in our power to attract businesses and jobs into our city. I believe we learn from the past, but we cannot continue to dwell on things that happened in the past. We must move forward. And I believe that our citizens understand that if we continue to dwell on the past instead of learning from it and moving forward, we will end up repeating the past and we will be left behind. So today is day one of moving forward, and I am asking that all of you move forward with me. We are Nixa, and we will succeed. Thank you. Okay. So the first thing, order of business, is as I was the Mayor Pro Tem, we need to elect a new Mayor Pro Tem. So I will entertain nominations.
I nominate Sean Lucas.
Any other nominations? Aaron Peterson nominated Sean Lucas, Darlene Graham with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we play musical chairs. Where'd my... I lost my seating chair. Nope, found it. Okay. Kelly, you stay where you're at. Matt Ogden. And then Sean Lucas. Aaron and Darlene get to stay, and Zern, you're on that end. All right. Did everyone have a chance to review the consent agenda? Any questions? And a motion?
So made to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Sean Lucas, second by Aaron Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Nope, sorry, roll call, please. It's gonna be a minute.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Matt Ogden?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Service awards. Service award for Brittany Finley for five years with the police department.
Mayor, council.
Officer Finley could not be here tonight.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Officer Finley couldn't be here tonight. She actually had to go home a little early because she wasn't feeling well. But I do have some nice things to say about her. She is celebrating her five-year anniversary with us. She is currently assigned to our Patrol Division, and most commonly, she is a leader in culture service and self-initiated activity when it comes to the stats for the squad. She's very proactive. She likes to make municipal warrant arrests, drug seizures, and DWI investigations. She is also a field training officer and a defensive tactics instructor. During the last five years, we've seen Officer Finley develop quite a bit over that time, and she's stepped up to be quite a leader internally within the department, and we look forward to many more years of service.
All right. The awards and recognition, the Electric Department RP3 Award.
Sorry. Mayor and city council, on Monday, May the first, Nixa Electric Utility will officially receive the 2023 to 2026 RP3 Platinum Level Award at the American Public Power Association's Engineering and Operation Conference in Pasadena, California. Chris Hewitt, Assistant Electric Superintendent, will represent Nixa Electric Utility in accepting the award for us. For those of you that are new, RP3 stands for Reliable Public Power Provider. RP3 is a program of the American Public Power Association where they recognize public power utilities for excelling in four major categories, including reliability. The RP3 designation shows that we provide reliable day-to-day service. We collect and analyze reliability data. We have mutual aid agreement in place, as well as system-wide disaster management plans. We ensure the proper cyber and physical security measures are in place and up to date. Number two is safety. We instill a culture of safety that starts at the top and diffuses through all personnel and services that we do. At Nixa Utilities and Public Works, it's everyone's responsibility to keep safety at the front of everything we do. Each employee, no matter their position, has the right and the responsibility to stop work and speak up whenever they see something that has a potential for injury. Number three is workforce development. We continually offer staff training through workshops, college, other industry association courses, and in-house programs. We provide our team with opportunities to network with peers from across the state and the nation. We hear from experts. Many of the department are members of state and regional and national associations and technical committees. And number four is system improvement, where we demonstrate good stewardship of utility assets and maintain system integrity. We initiate programs, which are our CIPs, approved by you, for system improvement and future-proofing. We participate in research and development, do extensive system planning, implementation of improvement projects, and focus on long-term utility financial health. There are three RP3 award levels based on the extent at which we meet the program criteria of those four items. The gold level scores are between 80 and 89%. The platinum level is at 90 to 97%, and then there's a diamond level for the top 2%, 98 and 100%, 98 through 100%. In our case this year, we scored 96.5% or a half a point below the diamond level, so we are a platinum again this year, or again for this session. To achieve diamond level in the next round, we'll be looking to the DED program, which has a number of research and development programs that may work for us. There are a few other items out there that could help you achieve diamond level, although they're usually for a lot larger utilities than we are, things like adding AEDs to all the trucks and those types of things. So we'll be looking at those and how we can, since we just missed by half a point of getting the platinum level. I'm still very, or the diamond level. Since our first award in 2014, which was a gold level achievement, Nixa Electric has strived to remain a top electric utility, not just in Missouri, but in the U.S. in all of the qualifying categories. This is our fourth consecutive RP3 award. I wish to commend all the department employees, as well as all the support personnel in all of our other departments, that worked so hard to achieve such a distinguished recognition. I especially want to recognize Chris Hewitt, Assistant Electric Superintendent, Angela Brook, our Administrative Assistant, for their dedication in accumulating and packaging all the necessary information and documentation for the application process. It's literally a three-ring binder, this big, that they have to put together to make all this go. They work on it for quite a bit. Throughout the year, they're always tracking the data, but over several weeks in September, they're hard at work on that lengthy application process, and fortunately, this is only every three years. They don't have to do it every year, so. Mayor and council, we also wish to thank you for this award. Without your support for our programs, especially major system improvements, this wouldn't be possible. So tonight, what I'll have to show you here is the RP3 award. This one will actually be one that we can use, put up here in City Hall. I've got a couple of members of the thing. Yeah, there's a couple of them here. You can take a picture if you'd like. If you want, I'll go ahead and do the second one, since I'm standing here. It's a related award. American Public Power Association has also awarded this year, for 2022, a Certificate of Excellence in Reliability. This award is somewhat related, as I mentioned. The Certificates of Excellence in Reliability is recognition where we use a software tracker called the E-Reliability Tracker to record all outage data, including and not limited to number of outages, the type, the duration, all of that type of thing. It's all done online. This data is compared with similar data collected by the Department of Energy's Energy Information Institute. Last year, we were ranked in the top quartile of our, for our system average interruption duration index. Again, I wish to express my congratulations to the crew for, this is all due to their quick response times, low outage times, and just dedication for when they get a call, they get in here and they get it taken care of, so.
We can go ahead and do a five-minute recess while we do our picture.
Are you cold? I'm freezing. My nose, my nose is so cold. It's cold, it's really cold.
It's fine.
You're lush. I guess so. I maybe just turned the air on because it was warm last week and I haven't remembered to turn it off. It's the last week I just turned the air on to shut off the office because it's so odd in there. So I left my fire. You better change. The weather's gonna change here, so I'm just, I'm glad I brought my jacket because I'm just like ice-cute wear.
Darlene, would you like to sign this really quick?
Why, short!
On the line, please.
It's a short name, huh?
Sorry? Yeah, it's not very big.
Yeah, it's not very big.